Meeting to order. Welcome to Channel 32, Corinna Cullen, and to René Siepault. Councillor Barfus is going to join us in a few minutes. He's running a little late. And welcome to our gallery. We have Danny Smith in the gallery. Thank you. Danny?
No.
Sorry. That's on me.
And it's the fire chief.
Yes. Okay. We're going to ask Councillor Bantry. Could you offer a word of prayer on behalf? Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we bow our heads before thee this day at the beginning of our council meeting. We ask that we be guided and directed by the Spirit, and the things that we do and say will be for the benefit of the community of Cardston. Very thankful for these positions. May we always be responsible to our citizens. This is our prayers and it's our word in the name of our Son Jesus Christ.
Thank you very much, Councillor Bantry. Okay, we need to adopt the agenda as presented, except I have a few changes and additions that need to be done. Regarding requests for decisions, we will need first of all to add 7D council meetings. We need to improve the motion that we made for the summer meetings and add the time of those meetings. 7E, we need a consensus on the date for the barbecue. That was, remember, the work of compensation, refund that we have, and a desire to recognize our workers.
Marian's gonna...
I'm sorry, Corinna. We have one other addition, and it's a staffing, pool staffing.
You wanted on the 7F?
Yes, that would be good. And we'll just speak to that. Sorry, because we didn't have the bathroom.
Is that in camera?
No, no, it's fine.
Okay. Now, I have a change I would like to do. I would like to have 7C moved as 7B, and 7B becoming 7C. So switch the order of those two items. Welcome, Councillor Barfus.
7...
7C will be 7B, 7B will be 7C. Is that all right? Okay, so this is the revised agenda. I need a motion to approve. Thank you. Councillor Barnes is approving the agenda as modified. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. We don't have a delegation quite right now, so we will carry on with item 5, adoptions of meaning of the regular council meeting of May 27th. Are there any questions regarding those minutes? If not, we need a motion.
Just have one last thing.
Councillor Kui?
Find the minutes here. I think at the very end there we were to record who made the motion to come out of camera, and who made the motion to extend, and the motion to adjourn. And I think it was a little bit different than what's on here this time.
Okay. It was Councillor Barfus that took the note.
I recorded it.
He had, he took the minutes at that point.
You have the same person?
It has Councillor Barfus to go in camera, moved by Councillor Kui to reconvene, and moved by Councillor Bantry to extend to 8:15.
And Councillor Bantry to adjourn. I thought it was Councillor Barnes that did the adjournment.
I did the which?
The adjourning.
The adjourning. Yeah. I don't think so. I don't think it was either.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I've written down, I've written down mine, so that's what I've written down.
Well, and I think this might be two, two meetings ago, because the last one was CCW.
Yes.
Oh-oh. Yeah, it might be.
Okay. So in that case, this is resolved?
So this was, yeah. Oh, you're right.
Okay, so we're okay on this one. Councillor Bantry, you have a question?
Motion 1471, membership for Black Sands. Do we have any update on that one?
Oh, Councillor, we need to approve the minute as they are, then we can ask questions. We need to approve them the way they are.
I'll look to approve them now.
All right, thank you. All in favor? Thank you. If you have a question, can we put that on the question on the 10?
Sure.
Okay? Maybe you want to reserve that 10. I see we have at 5:10, we have our delegation here. Mandy Breski and Isabella coming?
Valbena is.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I see Val coming. So, no, it's not Val. Val is, oh, Val is there, and is Mandy there? Okay, Mandy and Val are there. They are going to explain to us the Tomorrow Project, and so if you'd like to come to the pulpit and help us understand this very worthwhile project, please go ahead.
I'm not ready yet, but let me just dig deep into the day.
Okay. Well, that project, that project has to do with cancer research. Cano, go ahead.
Your worship. Thank you very much for the invitation to attend your town council tonight. I know you've got lots of business to do. And we'll be very brief. We represent Mandy and I, the Tomorrow Project. Just a little background on that. Last summer, I received an email along with all our Alberta Health Services employees, that it was now its 14th year, they're still looking for participants in the goal of the Tomorrow Project to recruit 50,000 Albertans to participate in this elongated cancer research project. They're looking for people between the ages of 35 and 69 who had not had cancer to participate. Having previously been involved with a fundraiser for the Cancer Society, which involved a weekend with 200 kilometers on a bicycle, and the need to raise $2,500 to participate, it seemed like an easy thing to just go in, give her the blood, do a lifestyle questionnaire. So I went ahead into Lefford and did that. Subsequent, I received an email, pardon me, a newsletter along with all of the participants. One line caught my attention. It said that Onaway, Alberta, had the highest per capita participation in the province of Alberta. Well, for the Southern Alberta boy, just to have somebody else's number one, kind of gets under your skin. And so I had a harebrained idea that perhaps Raymond would want to take on Onaway. Raymond had just come through the TSN Sport and Craft event, in which they were presented a check for $25,000 for their new sports field, and that competition involved who could generate the most votes, Vulcan or Raymond. As I put my thoughts down on paper to the Tomorrow Project, I thought Raymond and McGrath was probably a better match than Raymond and Onaway, and dragged McGrath into it, and so made arrangements to do a similar presentation to the towns of Raymond and McGrath. That was scheduled for the 21st of January. The conversation had been happening in December. A few nights before that event, I had my last conversation with my mother. She's known to an age 90 a client bears some. She was now 92 and had been diagnosed on New Year's Eve this past, this year, with pancreatic cancer. So my last conversation with her, which I will cherish, was to tell her that I was going to go to the two towns that she had an affinity for, Raymond and McGrath. She was born in McGrath and married a fellow from Raymond, to talk to the town councils about this project that I had taken an interest in. Both of those councils, I won't use the word endorsed, but had a warm reception for the concept of a healthy competition. That was on a Tuesday evening, and on Wednesday I presented that same concept to the Rotary Club to see if they're interested in mobilizing with the town to do this competition. The night before I did, I presented to town council, my mother had passed away, and the gentleman and Rotary were aware of that, and they suggested that they wanted as a club to endorse the Tomorrow Project and this healthy challenge between communities, and suggested that it be called that project, the Fontella, Raspas and Damié project. And so that club endorsed it. Shortly thereafter, the Raymond Rotary Club had its dinner dance and invited the Tomorrow Project people down to have a booth. They signed up 50 people. The town had a fun run called the Chili Willie, same day as the, same day as the dinner dance. And anyway, out of that, 111 people in the town of Raymond were a part of the 150 that showed up at the Ag Society last week. Tomorrow Project had made a commitment that if we raised 50 participants, they would move the study center to Raymond rather than having Raymond, Raymond Ice going into Lefford. So 150 people then went through that process of participating, being signed up for the long haul. As I shared with Gary Bigman, who happens to be my mother's cousin, and I'm, it was to me until I had that conversation, Gary's first wife passed away with cancer. And he said, if there's anything that I or my offices can do, let us know. So in that process, I guess it was when I met with, with you at the interagency meeting here in Cardston. Mandy had said that she would be interested in mobilizing Cardston as I was having fun with, with Raymond, and Mayor Corinna at that time indicated an interest in having in contact with people from the town. So to that end, with the material that you've received from Jeff, I would like to issue a challenge to the community of Cardston through the town council and through your citizens, to consider becoming a part of this healthy competition that seems now to be a part of Gary Bigman's Cardston, Tabor Warner constituency. In the news clip that you have received from CTV, we made it quite clear that we're prepared to take on any community in the province of Alberta. And of course, that challenge goes to Cardston, and if you get on board, I mean, what difference does 111 people make when you're looking for 50,000 and you've been looking, and you've been working on it since 2,000? Reminds me of the story of that starfish story on the beach where a boy is going along the beach and throwing starfish back in, and a gentleman says, what are you doing? He said, well, I'm throwing these perishing starfish back into the, to the ocean. And she said, well, but look, look at all that you have to do, and you've got more than you can accomplish here. And he threw another one and said, it made a difference to that one. I don't believe that there's any families in Southern Alberta anymore that can say cancer hasn't touched us in some way. It certainly has touched mine. Our Member of Parliament, Jim Hillier, married my daughter, and some of you'll remember that he was just barely recovered from his journey with cancer, as you supported him from this community to take on the nomination and to go there. It was because of him I rode that 200 kilometers in his recognition. And day two was, that was the 21st of June, it was snowing and wet, and Libby and I, his daughter, thought we were going to die along with everybody else that wasn't going to make it there. So I want, Mandy is a part of this. She just asked me if I would support her tonight, and I'm doing that. I have an ambassadorial box for her, which hasn't been opened yet, which is the same material that I received from my box here, and I would just like to... Sure, go ahead. And while I give you this, Mandy will take a few minutes to talk about what she's done since we talked to her. There just moves along, and take as many as you want.
Okay, so because of you being, I think of the interagency meeting, I believe that Kathy Semerle is the person from over there that agreed to do that, right? Also, she's my sister-in-law, and so I don't mind, you know, working with her to see what we can do in Cardston. But one of the ideas that I had was to talk to the people during the Cardston Kids Marathon, since that's coming up next week, and the idea was just that either somebody could just make an announcement of the opening or closing of that event, and maybe they could set up a booth. While the people in Calgary are very willing to come down and have a booth set up, and really, it's just a matter of gathering names at that booth and giving out information. It's not a time where, you know, they're actually going to take your blood or your vitals or whatever. It's just a time for them to give and take information. And I know that a lot of people participating in that event are children that aren't 35, but if last year they had 2,000 people, I'm sure that 300 or 400 of them were in the age group that we're looking at. And so I did think that it would be a decent event to see. Anyway, I have sent a couple of emails to them. I haven't heard back from them yet. I don't know if you have any pull with them. I know it's kind of their own thing, not necessarily a town thing, but I, my thoughts were just that it would possibly be a great event that the people in Calgary would be willing to come to. And then, the same way that in Raymond, they had one event that they came to, and then the next time they came and took the information that they needed, I was thinking about the parade, because parade days only have a lot of people, and they'd be happy to come again and set up a booth. And then if people want to go and give their blood or their samples or whatever is required there, then that would be easy as well. I think we could take Raymond easy, don't you? 150? So you have?
Well, we, we, Tabor has the highest number in Southern Alberta right now. They've got about 10 more. They're just shy of 200.
But their population?
But their population, so per capita, they'll streak.
Yeah, so per capita, we're far from that compared to Onaway.
No, we're less than 5% at the moment. But we're not done yet. We're not done yet. We're just started.
And it would be a fun, healthy competition, and it would be great for the news as well, because it would hit the news that these two towns are kind of competing with each other on this healthy thing, and it's a great health initiative. I too have a mother and father who have both passed away from cancer, so it definitely is here among us.
I will also be speaking to the Rotary Club. As you might be aware, Rotary has taken an interest internationally in polio, in the eradication of polio. That's taken billions of dollars to do. The thing I like about this is that there's no cost. They're just asking for our blood or spit, and that's free.
Okay. I really think that personally, I'm interested in that study. I don't know how council feels about it. Maybe if they have any questions, please feel free to, to ask questions.
I actually enrolled in the Tomorrow Project about five, four or five years ago.
Right.
And we had to drive up to Calgary then, leaving everyone in Lefford, so it's great that they were able to come up to Raymond and do that there, and I think...
And they'll come right here.
I think it's a fantastic...
They have getting some models to work with.
And if I can say something, Mandy, is that we have a contact for the Children's Marathon. Maybe you want to talk to Jeff, and he will be able to help you with that.
Okay. That would be great. I just need to get permission to the people in Calgary. He's kind of emailing me every second day to say, do we know yet?
Yeah. I think it would be a wonderful project for the community. I think it's a unifying project. Regardless that we beat Raymond or not, that's not my worry. My worry is that we get as much participation as we can to bring your project forward and to move it forward along with the other communities.
Absolutely.
That's really what I'm looking forward to, to accomplish.
And if they come to your parade, they've already told us they can't come to ours because their staff will be on vacation then. But if they come to your parade, I'll be very jealous.
Well, it's August 6th, so, 9, sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, so, thank you very much. So is there anything you require from us, or what exactly would you like us to do to help you?
You know, we're not asking for a proclamation. The town of McGrath put it on their website that they are a part of it.
Okay.
The town of Raymond, a few days after I did the presentation, the recreation person was doing this Chili Willie, and the mayor approached him about including it into that. When we did our study center, and the media had an interest in that and showed up, representatives from the town council were there to speak to the media about, it was a Raymond thing, it wasn't a Rotary Club thing.
Okay. There is maybe another event where you could maybe drum up some business. We will have the opening of the pools sometime soon. That could be a time for you to have a move.
Is that like July time or August time?
We're looking probably, according to Jeff, as he nodded, so I'm going to let him go do that.
I want no dates on the record.
So the 16th?
Just June, right? I tell you.
So there will be, there will be soon an announcement. Hopefully, if the weather was cooperating, we could give you a better time, but the weather, the weather is not helping us right now.
That would be great. I'm sure any of those events would be fantastic to work on.
Yeah, so keep in touch with Jeff.
Okay.
And thank you so much. Marian, do you want?
I think it would be appropriate if you want us to get behind this project, that we have a motion on record.
Yes, I agree.
I'm prepared to make that motion. I move that we agree with the Tomorrow Project in principle and invest some, a little bit of time and energy getting the word out and letting the community know what is expected for joining and participating. Through electronic media and other...
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, we need to vote. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation, and I'm sure we will be behind that vote with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Can you get the rest of them?
Okay. We need to move to item 6, Business arising, Westwind School Division lease. As you can see in your packet, Jeff has worked very hard with the school division to bring forward a document that has to do with the lease and operation of the town of Limesbark facility by the Westwind School Division. The reason why we were looking at this project and at that lease is to be able to allow the school division to have better facilities for their sports program while keeping the town property available to citizens when required. There are a few things inside there that may be in need of clarification. If you look at the map that has been provided regarding the area that is covered under this lease, you will notice that one item has not been included, which is the bathrooms. And Jeff, maybe if you could help us understand why the bathroom upkeep was not part of the lease, if you don't mind.
Sure. When we were working with Westwind, it wasn't a major issue, but the intent was because we were going to maintain the maintenance of the camp kitchen, the playground, and the washrooms, that would be our, our piece of it. It was simply where we drew our yellow dotted line, for lack of a better term, and agreed that that would, that would save the town, as we have summer staff that does the washrooms every morning and goes through the camp kitchen and does a little bit of that maintenance in there anyway. It seemed to be just a little bit better logistical fit.
Okay. So can you explain to me then, in the winter time, what happens?
The washrooms are locked up all winter. As soon as it's freeze-up time, they're not heated enough that we can keep watering them.
Okay.
So they're locked and closed as soon as we get to freeze up.
So they're open from end of May?
May along, we can set. We leave them open as far as we can into the football season. So it really just depends on how cold it gets, and Councillor Barfus can speak to some cold football seasons, but we keep them open as late as we can through high school football.
So we have staff covering the washroom through that whole period?
We do, but they're used down dramatically when the weather turns cold.
Okay.
Are they open 24 hours a day?
They are.
Is there an issue with vagrancy in a park?
Yes.
So how are we doing, dealing with that?
We clean the washrooms and the camp kitchen every morning.
And during the day?
Well, they're used. It's, I don't know exactly, sorry, Madam Mayor, if I'm not sure what you're asking. Are they used during the day by vagrants? Yes, they are.
I'm just wondering, is once a day sufficient to keep, to upkeep for washroom?
Depends on the day, to be quite honest. Most times, yes, I think so.
All right, so let me ask you a question. If there are washrooms that are, public washrooms, that are really in, in high need of cleanup during the day, what do people do to, to let the town know that it needs cleaning?
I guess just that. If we received a call that there was something terribly out of order at them, then we would address it right then, for sure.
Is there something posted inside those washrooms?
I don't think so. I don't know.
Is there something we could add?
Certainly.
Thank you. I would stress that we add that so that people who find that really in not a clean order should be able to have a place to let people know.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Jeff regarding this lease?
Well done. It's well done.
Thank you. I really felt it was quite comprehensive. So I need...
Mayor, are we, are we giving Westwind School Division the go-ahead if they make structure changes to the announcement area?
If I may, Madam Mayor, any infrastructure, any capital has to be approved by the town prior to them going ahead. Any major capital, we've kind of agreed, as a gentleman's agreement, that we would look to share that, anything major. We would cooperate in capital of project, but...
I think that's a good consideration.
I think it's in that we consider any major capital, and then if they want to do any modifications or repairs, they just give us notification as the landlord.
The reason why I ask that, Jeff, is was the school division not responsible for the, the building and the erection of that announcement, we have to start with?
I can't speak to the genesis of that completely. I'm sorry. I don't know. We've always maintained, it's been kind of a casual shared agreement, I would say. They take care of some of the things in it. We basically take care of the building. We recently re-clad it after the hail, for example, but they've, yeah...
The construction, there was some members who, of a group that worked at the school, but it wasn't constructed by the school.
Jeff, I just want to ask you, if there were some area that after we agree on this lease kind of came up and kind of were a little bit more gray area, contentious area, is that something that you have a provision to be able to revisit?
Okay, yeah, I'd, I'd have to find the exact one, but I believe either party can...
Well, we're, we're not rescinding it. I'm trying to say if you have to tweak it.
Yeah, there's a notice.
So renewal was 180 days prior to its expiration.
There is a review on the 6.
Yeah, which would be just the year before the expiration.
Yeah, but I'm thinking before that time.
We can certainly look at some verbiage that would address that. I don't know if it's specific. I think the parties are in agreement to do that.
There is a provision, 10.3. It says, "This agreement may not be amended or modified in any respect except by written instrument executed by parties heretofore in the same manner and with the same formality as this agreement is executed." So that gives you...
The latitude to do so.
Latitude to do it.
All right. Thank you for pointing that out. Councillor Bantry?
Jeff and Marian, in the operation of the football field lighting, who pays the bills on that?
School Division does.
Okay.
All right. So we have this, we need a motion to...
I should make that motion as a member of the Parks and Rec Committee. I'd like to make the motion to accept this agreement between the town of Cardston and the Westwind School Division as it is presented to us.
Thank you. Any questions?
Sorry, I may have missed this. Have we had a lawyer look it over? Do we, do we need a lawyer to look it over?
I believe that it is an agreement that has been really written by the two parties, looking at each one from their point of view to make sure that their interests were covered and ours were covered too. It was a two-way street.
And we did use a template from previous agreements that have been drafted by legal... We did use a template from previous agreements that have been drafted by legal.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Okay, any further questions? Councilor Edmonds?
Is there anything there? I didn't see anything about snow removal.
Okay, now that's an interesting point and Council Barfus has a good laugh, we know why. Okay, Jeff, do you want to address that?
Are you talking about on the field?
Right.
Oh, okay.
Like if they want to practice and there's a foot of snow in there.
But it says to do.
It's part of the obligation.
And to the school division's credit, in the previous year, so they've done it anyway. When they needed on it, they've sent their people down to do it. If I might, one of the things I hope this fixes is we've had a bit of conflict in the past that the schools cleared it, but maybe it's been a little hard on the turf, so then Parks and Rec is getting a little worried. Now it's all their issue to deal with. If they're hard on the turf, it's their turf to manage.
And that's the whole idea of this agreement, is to cover all those gray areas that we could not really fix before. So we have a motion on the table. All in favor? Thank you, Senator.
If I might, Jeff, I really want to thank you for the good work. You know, I called you a few times on this issue and I really appreciate the hard work that you've done in your group to get this to fruition. Thank you so much.
The school division's been a great partner in it too. They really have been trying to make this move forward, so it's been quite easy to negotiate.
Well, I appreciate that because I know it was a fairly long road and you were very skillful in that.
Sure, Dr. Cott will be very happy.
Thank you. All right, we now need to look at a request for decisions, 7A. If you look at the subject, it's two policies that are kind of redundant. And we now have a policy that is T152 that take care of the redundancy. But what we need to do, we need to rescind the policy M20 and then we need a motion to approve T152. T152 by its own nature will rescind T151, okay? It's just because it's a sequential progression. One, you have a progression under the same number, 15. Every subsequent point, 1, 2, 3, the furthest you go away, it rescinds what just before, okay? Automatically. All right, so I need a motion to rescind...
Can we ask questions first or?
Well, let's have the motion and then you will ask a question. Councilor Bantry?
Mayor, I make a motion that we repeal policy M20 and approve policy T152, which is the mileage for, under the Canada Revenue Agency.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Well, just curious if the administration believes it would be better if that were separated into two motions?
Yeah, and personally, I believe two separate motions would be preferable.
Then I make the motion to repeal policy M20.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
I'm just wondering, it doesn't specify a particular rate. Is this just kind of whatever the rate is at the time?
It changes annually.
It's changeable?
Yeah, potentially changes annually.
In theory, it changes it.
Okay, it is constantly a moving item. Okay, so all in favor of repealing a policy M20? Thank you. Now I need a motion to approve T152. Councilor Barfus?
I'll move to approve policy T152.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. All right. Now we're going to go to 7B, Backyard Hens Pilot Project. Last time, as you know, we looked at the what and the who. This time, we need to review the document as presented and then we need to decide on the when. All right, as I reread the document, I really realized that maybe something in that document is not there and should be there, which is a timing, the length of the project. So if we had such a project approved in town, we should have in that document, that could be the foundation of a future bylaw, whenever that might be, to be a project to be completed over one year's period. I think that would give people a chance to go through a winter period, okay? So how do you feel about adding this part of the document? Yeah, I see a no, okay. The next step, I think there is something missing also in that document because it's really wide open and I think we need to kind of give it a little bit of a closure form. If that ever was accepted, I believe that the next step, a bullet on the next step should be there, something that to the effect of which they, upon successful evaluation of completion of the project, council will establish, establish a standalone Backyard Hens bylaw. I believe that we need to look at giving a closure to this document. That's my opinion.
Aren't we sort of getting the cart ahead of the horse right now?
Okay, Councilor Edmonds, what we're doing, we're looking at a document that might be adopted or not, but that will be complete if it were, so we don't have to revisit it.
It's a lot of work for something like that.
No, it's not a lot of work. It just means to add two lines that typed on a typewriter on a computer and add it. To my point of view, it's not a lot of work.
I think maybe what Councilor Edmonds is referring to is if we go ahead and have the plebiscite on it, is that going to affect the duration of the pilot project? If, you know, that's kind of what I wondered about too, is the timing. If the, you know, plebiscite is overwhelmingly against Backyard Hens, maybe we just give it up. If it's kind of a third, you know, then maybe we continue on the pilot project if it's...
But if you have, you've done all that work under the same pretense.
Yeah, well, I understand. I'm just, I'm saying that that might be, you know, have a determination on, you know, the continuation of the pilot project or whether, you know, three scenarios in my mind, this is the three scenarios. If it's overwhelmingly against Backyard Hens, then we could just probably terminate it at that point. If it's, like I say, you know, a very large minority that, like a third, that wants Backyard Hens, then maybe we continue the pilot project on to the end of the year to get more data. If there's, say overwhelmingly four Backyard Hens, then maybe at that time we just change the bylaw.
Well, it's not a bylaw, it's just a work...
No, I know, I know.
It's not a bylaw.
But I mean, you're saying that...
This is a document that could be used for a bylaw.
That's what I'm saying, is you're saying that the termination of, you know, if we have a successful termination of this project, then we amend the bylaw and make it a permanent.
Okay, all right, fair enough, fair enough. Okay. So at this point, are you satisfied then with the way the agreement is drafted at this point?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
The selling of the, the fertilizer has been restricted in here. The selling of eggs, I don't have a problem with that. The fertilizer, there are people out there that want it. How do we get rid of it if we can't sell it? What do you do to get rid of it? Where do we put it?
You can give it away.
Give it away. You just give it away. I'm okay with that.
You can sell it.
Okay.
Okay.
So you can give the eggs to...
There's nothing in this saying what we're going to do with the 60 hens if the project is terminated.
Well, do you know, Councilor, it's the same story as a timing.
But shouldn't that be in there?
Same story as a timing.
I'm not sure if I understand what's, would you say that again, Councilor Edmonds? Do you understand what you're saying?
We have 10 people that are doing the pilot project and it's decided that it's a no-go. Then we have 60 chickens that nobody wants.
Not necessary.
Okay.
What happens to them?
Do you know what?
What we need to do is... Addressed in the final point under hens, it says the culling of hens shall be allowed on the property.
If you remember, Wendy had said that this project cannot exist unless culling is part of the project. Marian?
Madam Mayor, I think what Councilor Edmonds is trying to point out here is if the pilot project, at the end of the pilot project, if council deems they don't want to move forward for whatever reason, maybe there should be something in the agreement that says, "I'm participating in a pilot project. I agree that if council does not choose to move forward with this, that I agree to remove the structure and remove the hens from the property." Is that kind of what you're getting at? Which I think is missing, I would agree, it's probably...
So you want it in writing in that part?
Yeah, I think it should be.
Yeah.
And that was mentioned before and I think people agree with that.
I think it was just missed.
But so do you then want to add that the project will be one year in length?
If I may, Mayor, there's also a place for, if you look at inspections and enforcement, in the second white bullet there, if we included a thing, if requirements are not met or the program comes to a close and then the rest of the program takes effect.
All right, so let's modify that. So do you want to signify that the project will be one year in length or not?
That's what we originally talked about, I think we should.
Right, and it's not written in that document, so will we add that? Okay, thank you. Okay, so I need to know if you are now willing to approve that document or let administration know that this document will then stand as the document that we will use if we had such a project. So do you need a motion to approve this? Okay, so who is going to make a motion to approve this document as modified?
So I move that we adopt the Backyard Hens Pilot Project Agreement as amended for information use.
Okay, thank you. So now we have said we were going to deal with what Councilor Bantry brought up last time and which Councilor, oh, sorry, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, now the second part of that project is to deal with when that backyard project will take place. And Councilor Bantry, you had some very firm opinion regarding that matter.
I'm prepared to make a motion in that regards, Mayor, if the council is prepared to hear the motion.
Please go ahead.
Whereas the item of backyard hens have become very decisive, how should I call it?
Issue.
Issue in the Town of Cardston, whereas administration has put forth the costs associated with a pilot project, and whereas there is a motion to have a public plebiscite dealing with backyard hens, then I move that we do not do a pilot project before we hear from the residents of the Town of Cardston on the public plebiscite.
Okay, that is a motion put forward. Any questions regarding this motion? Councilor Barfus?
When we were talking two minutes ago, because I wasn't here at CCW, when I returned back from my trip down south, I was, I don't know what was said at CCW or when it was broadcast on Channel 32, but I had a voice mailbox full of questions and concerns about, their impression was that we had already put into place the pilot project, was probably about a third of the calls that I had received were about. So I would very much be in favor of having a plebiscite before we put into place anything else just so that there's clarification in our community about what's happening.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Edmonds?
I feel the same way.
Okay. Personally, I also always said that I would prefer to have a plebiscite first and then to allow for a project. I believe there is merit in a project, but also believe that I render campaign in saying to people that I wanted them to have, make the decision, except that I really feel that people deserve to be educated regarding this and I will suggest that Wendy and those interested by this project run maybe even classes ahead of the plebiscite, the same way as what they did. They did not have a plebiscite, but they're allowed for a certain time before people could join the project and I think that would be their privilege to educate the people. Okay, so we have a motion on the table.
Mayor, concerning what you just said about having an open meeting and educational process, I don't think this council can endorse that.
That is not up to us to do, Councilor. That is why I referred it to Wendy and her interested group. It's nothing to do with us. That will have to be the private interest, the same way as a provide.
Right, thank you.
Okay. All in favor? Let's go to the vote. Please read the motion.
A motion by Councilor Bantry that whereas the item of backyard hens has become a very divisive issue in the Town of Cardston, whereas administration has put forth the costs associated with the pilot project and whereas there is a motion to have a plebiscite on the issue of backyard hens, therefore be resolved, that the plebiscite regarding the issue of backyard hens be held before any backyard hens pilot project be begun.
That's correct. The plebiscite will be first, then the...
Mayor, I'd like to request this be recorded, vote?
Sure, if you want, record it.
Madam Mayor, can I just suggest that the last two words in that motion be changed slightly? Be begun is a bit of an odd statement.
Yeah.
Proceed or commence?
Command.
Before pilot project commence?
Considered, maybe?
Be considered.
Yeah. It was just an odd wording to me.
Also, one question I did have about the motion as proposed, and maybe I missed something, but in there you mentioned the administration gave us an estimate of the costs related to, did I miss?
Which was a $500 for building...
They give us the different costs of the different coops and stuff from home hardware.
But that wasn't to the town, those weren't costs to be incurred by the town.
No, that's for individual use.
Right. I think it maybe seemed that way in the thing.
It was information. Maybe it should speak to information?
I would, personally, I'd strike that phrase. I think, you know, just maybe...
Okay, are you asking for a friendly amendment?
I would ask for the friendly amendment.
That we remove that, the cost associated with the...
The cost associated, yeah. Or add the words, you know, the costs for the participants, so that it's not implied that it's the cost to the town.
Well, my concern is, Councilor, if we don't put that in there, my concern is if we have a pilot project, okay? If my motion is not carried or is defeated and we have a pilot project, I want to make sure that those individuals who are participating in the project do not feel that the town is going to recover their money.
Right.
Reimburse them money.
Right. Councilor, I might suggest then that his actually friendly amendment actually clarifies that, that it's a cost to the individual, not to the town.
Then we could put in there, whereas administration has put forth costs associated with a pilot project on an individual basis.
Per participant.
Yeah.
Per participant.
Which were, which will not be reimbursed by the Town of Cardston.
That's good.
In the case of a non-pilot project or something like that.
Yes.
Is that all right?
That's good.
Okay, maybe we'll get that re... Okay, maybe we'll get that re-read. Re-read, just to make sure that we know what we're voting on, okay?
Let me just read this over one more time to make sure I got...
Please.
You did such a nice job.
Okay, whereas the issue of backyard hens has become a very divisive issue in the town of Cardston, whereas administration has put forth the costs associated with a pilot project to individuals, which will not be reimbursed by the town of Cardston. We get on that point, Jerry?
Yep.
And whereas there is a motion to have a plebiscite on the issue of backyard hens, therefore be resolved, that the plebiscite regarding the issue of backyard hens be held before any backyard hens pilot project commence.
Okay, so what we're voting on right now is to have the plebiscite prior to the pilot?
Well, I think we're just voting on this motion right now.
Yeah, but to clarify, that is the issue. Okay? All right, so it's time to vote if you don't have any more to say. So, let's vote. All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, just because that's a recorded vote.
And against?
Keep your hands up so that Graham can note who's...
Are you up for it?
It's unanimous.
It's a unanimous vote. I congratulate you, counsel, to be able to resolve that issue in that manner. It's rather remarkable.
I hate to say this, but I need a break.
Okay.
We hate you to say it too.
Could you, because we don't have any item to vote on right now, could you just go along? Graham will record your absence and when you come back, when you recover. So... Okay, let's go to item eight. There are no, go ahead, Marian, please.
There's still some items.
Oh, I'm so sorry, yeah, those items that we added. Seven D, a council needing, seven B, yes. So here we have two plebiscite questions that were brought forward by Councilor Bantry at CCW. So, Councilor Bantry, do you want to bring them as a motion at this table?
Yes, I move that the two questions as recommended to the CCWs, as recommended at the CCW meeting are number one, are you in favor of allowing backyard hens in the town of Cardston? And are you in favor of having fluoride in the town of Cardston drinking water? Those two questions stand as our questions in our public plebiscite.
Okay, thanks you. So, yeah. So, all in favor?
Questions?
Yeah, questions if you have any.
So in light of our postponing of the pilot program potentially until after this vote, is it something we want to reference in the question, or perhaps even have a third question? So just to give you an example, it says, "Are you in favor of allowing backyard hens in the town of Cardston?" Perhaps a second question, would you object to the town performing a pilot program for, you know, whatever it is, participants, ten participants to have chickens? Report back.
Okay, I appreciate your interest in having that, Councilor Bantry.
I think my motion prior to this cleared that up, that we would not have a pilot project unless a successful plebiscite was held.
Yeah, and I really think that that's what we have to make sure, is that the people know that that is the intent of the possible pilot project outcome of that. So that will have to be somehow in the media and somehow disseminated, word to mouth, a word to mouth to ear, and moved along that way. I think we had said that the simpler the question, the less biased the question would carry, the better it will be. But there is a place, this is why we had the other motion, to make sure that people would know that that's a possible outcome after plebiscite.
You lost me, sorry. You said this is why we had the other motion, to make sure people would know?
The motion that Councilor Banry did before regarding the possibility of a pilot project upon successful plebiscite result.
Yeah, and I think the only question I have on that is, it seems to me that if the town voted in favor, majority of them in favor of backyard hens, there'd be no point of having a pilot program. I think that we would just would move forward and...
I would think you'd still want to have a pilot project.
I really think you should.
To flesh out what your bylaws are going to be with it.
And I would think that if you're claiming that that would be the intent of this question, I think it maybe should be a little more clear in this question.
Personally, I like it this way, but you have the right to your opinion.
Okay. I guess my question is, what do you consider a successful plebiscite? As we've talked about the plebiscite, it is a non-binding plebiscite. So if, I'm being hypothetical here, but if we had the pilot project ahead of time and found out that, you know, if there was any concerns, then the data would help to influence it. What I'm saying is that there's two reasons that people might not be in favor of backyard hens. One would be a genuine valid concern, which could be answered by a pilot project. The other would be simple prejudice, which we don't know if that's valid or not. I mean, if it's overwhelmingly against, we just maybe won't make waves. But what I'm saying is that if there's a large, let's say a third of the people in the town of Cardston would be in favor of allowing backyard hens, would that be enough to justify going ahead with a pilot project? So, you know, do we have to have a majority? Or would a large minority be sufficient to give us justification to create a pilot project?
Mayor?
You are posing a good question.
Point of order, though, we are discussing the questions, not the parameters of the results of a public plebiscite. So we need to get, are these questions what we want to propose in a public plebiscite? Not all the parameters, what happens after a plebiscite? Or the count on the plebiscite, or something like that. That's just my...
If I may, Counselor Creed, you could help maybe address that issue by maybe proposing an amendment to the questions in the current motion.
Well, you were proposing...
That is the motion right now, right?
That we're discussing.
It has to be, it has to be that motion or a friendly amendment to the motion that we will have to agree upon.
Well, friendly amendments don't need a vote, just standard amendments do need a vote.
That's what I mean. Or we agree upon a friendly amendment, or it is an amended motion.
Right, so I think at this point we're still discussing.
Yeah, when I talked about it before, I said if we're going to put the pilot project beyond the plebiscite, then perhaps the question should be, are you in favor of, excuse me, having a pilot project to allow, you know, to investigate the possibility of putting backyard hens in the community? And that was, I'd actually proposed that before, so if Councilor Banry would like to accept that as a friendly amendment.
No, I won't.
Okay.
I'll leave my motion standing as the questions are over.
Okay, so Counselor, you have one chance to put the motion forward, and we will have to vote on that one before we vote on that other motion.
The question, traditionally...
Am I not correct?
This motion has to be addressed first.
Just speaking to this motion, traditionally, aren't plebiscites 50 plus one on acceptance of? I mean, how do you, yeah, on a plebiscite, how do you justify, you know, most plebiscites are 50 plus one, making this an exception? I guess that's the question.
Counselor, this is a non-binding plebiscite. In other words, counsel, upon the result, will decide what is appropriate.
In theory, counsel could completely ignore all of the results.
Right, so if it was a binding plebiscite, then it would have to be 50 plus one, is that right?
We do not have binding plebiscite.
That's just what I want to understand.
We will have, hopefully, a sense of how many people participated in a plebiscite and how many people are for or against.
Right.
And that would have to be taken in consideration when we make some decisions, for or against. Okay? All right. Yeah, maybe you want to put this trait on that motion.
On the motion. If the counselor does not accept the friendly amendment, then...
We have to vote on a motion.
Floor takes precedent. If that motion fails, a further order is passed.
Okay, so I had them just a little bit in the wrong order, but you still have a chance to decide.
So just to clarify, though, on that issue, we cannot propose amendments to motions? Aside from friendly accepted amendments?
The mover has to accept the amendment.
In a friendly amendment, but you can vote on an amendment to a motion.
Yes, you could put forward an amendment to the motion.
Which would then be voted on.
Have it voted on, and then take the motion. You're correct.
Do you want to read that one more time?
So if it's not a friendly amendment, so if Counselor Creed wants to put forward an amendment to the motion on the floor, then you can vote on that amendment?
And then vote on the original motion?
Then you vote on the original motion.
That's what I believe it was. That's what I believe it was, because AUMA does it in that order.
Yeah, you're correct.
Yeah, I believed it was. So Counselor Creed, you have your option.
Okay, actually, as I think about it, I don't know that it's going to make that much difference to change the question, so I won't push the amendment.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Please, Graham, read it one more time and we'll vote and carry on with our...
Moved by Counselor Banry that the word, sorry, to word the questions for the plebiscite as, number one, are you in favor of allowing backyard hens in the town of Cardston? And number two, are you in favor of having fluoride in the town of Cardston drinking water?
All right, so that's clear now. So we're ready to vote? All right, all in favor? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Madam Mayor, just one thing that was not discussed as part of this motion at CCW is we haven't set a date for the plebiscite, and I would like to do that tonight if possible.
Correct.
Included with this question.
We had mentioned at this point an October possible date, and we thought possibly the first, a Monday, possibly the first or second Monday in October. That was what we had in mind. So, Marian, one is close to Thanksgiving, and one's a little bit further away from Thanksgiving. So maybe let's take the one that is furthest away from Thanksgiving to make sure there's enough people in town.
With Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving is the 13th.
Fourteenth.
Thirteenth, so the one furthest away is the 27th of October.
And earlier on would be what?
The sixth or the 20th. So either the Monday before, the Monday after, or two months.
Why don't we try the 6th of October?
Yes, because we get later in October, we could get...
Yeah, we have people starting to move, yeah. 6th of October, are you all in favor?
Just a question. The cost of a plebiscite, is that influenced by how many people turn out?
No. It's just a basic administration cost. Do you need a motion to recall this?
Can you include the hours in the...
Yeah, which is normally from 8:00 to 10:00, 10:00 o'clock in the morning to 8:00 o'clock at night. Yeah, okay, so we need a motion to specify the date, October the 6th, and the time, 10:00 to 8:00.
I move that we specify the date for the plebiscite, October the 6th, voting to be from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Thank you. All in favor? Okay, so that's settled.
Just a question, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
On this particular issue, and I'm just looking for clarification really, if something pressing and urgent comes up between now and that plebiscite, is it too late to be adding a question that might be relevant to that time?
Honestly, I think...
According to the Act, you have to advertise the question with the date.
Starting a month prior?
Yeah.
What's our cutoff about a month?
Approximately.
So if something pressing comes up in July, we can throw it in there?
Sure.
I would be cautious to have too many questions on the plebiscite.
You don't want to be like California where they have 58 things to vote on.
You know, honestly, the less you have, the better it will be, and a clearer result, really it is.
Yeah. But yes, we could potentially add...
Do you have something in mind, Counselor?
Not at this time, I just know that things come up.
Just an open door, thank you. Okay, all right.
A whole summer ahead of us.
Mayor, on a public plebiscite, is there areas where people can answer questions before they vote?
You mean ask questions?
Yeah, ask and answer questions? Or is it just like a vote?
It's like a vote. It has to run similar to, well, under the Local Authorities Election Act. And so you would want to make sure that you didn't have petitioning of voters coming into the station to vote in either way. So we would designate the voting area, and there would not be any campaigning allowed on those, on that location.
Thank you.
Also, I might suggest that if you would appoint myself as a returning officer, because Paul Doye is not going to be there. But I can be the return.
Is counsel okay with Marian administrating?
Do we need a motion for that, Marian?
Okay, yes, we need a motion.
Yeah, I'll, well, we haven't voted on that yet, have we?
The other motion?
We haven't voted on the other. Yeah, I'll just add an amendment to it that we have Marian be the...
Marian Carlson is...
Marian Carlson be the electoral officer for...
Okay, so we have a motion that specifies October the 6th, 10:00 to 8:00, and with Marian being the returning officer.
And that the picket crews line up at the Lions Park.
I won't accept that as a friendly amendment.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Seven, C2 has a Chinook Arch letter of support. Counselor Bond, you want to talk to that?
Just give me a second here, I'm trying to find it on here again.
Okay, here, if you want to read this, here's the motion.
Ah, yes.
We need a motion?
Yes.
For a letter of support?
I would like to make a motion that council asks administration to send a letter of support for the Chinook Arch Regional Library Service to Minister Greg Whitick.
On behalf of Marian, counsel.
On behalf of Marian, counsel.
In favor of additional funding, is that the justice?
Yes. They're going to request funding from the province, additional funding, yeah.
Increased funding.
Increased funding, yeah.
Okay.
Want to read that?
Marian, you want to...
The motion should say what the letter of support is for.
All right, let me just get in here. I know where we're getting at.
It's not in the original motion, so it's not going to help you, counsel.
No, I know, but I know what I'm talking about. Okay. I would like to recommend that council, no, I make a motion, that council have administration send a letter of support for the Chinook Arch Regional Library Services to Minister Greg Whitick in support of increasing funding for the library services in the province.
Thank you. Good job. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Now, let's go to seven D. Council meetings for the summertime, we have two council meetings. It has been a tradition to have them at 4:00 p.m. rather than 5:00 p.m. So we need to have this changed if you choose to keep it at 4:00 p.m. so that administration can have the proper amount of time to advertise the changes. Okay, so I need a motion.
How about the dates also, is that...
The dates, we already have them, if I remember right, is mid-July and mid-August.
July 15th and, no, sorry, July 15th and August 13th.
Thirteen, is it?
I think I would remember the August one. It'd be August the twelfth.
The twelfth.
Didn't think that.
All right, so we already had agreed, so it's July the... July the fifteenth and August the eleventh.
Twelve.
Twelve, sorry. Okay, so somebody needs to put a motion. Councillor Creed, go ahead.
Okay, I would like to move that the council meetings on July fifteenth and August twelfth commence at four o'clock PM.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, seven E. Here we have a date, you remember the Worker Compensation Board sent the town a fairly substantial check back. Good job for our workers who saved the town in part of money. And we showed as council to reward them with a barbecue that we will hold, to recognize their best efforts. Spouses are invited, if you are interested in having spouses. Councillor Bangry, what's your opinion?
I like the idea of having spouses there, because they're a part of the support group. But I also wonder, are we going to make a presentation to our employees at that time? Jackets at the time, are we looking into it?
Okay. The date would be July the sixteenth, is that agreeable to most of you? We are back in session July the fifteenth, the day after council meeting. Agreement? How many of you will be there for July the fifteenth meeting of that week?
I'll be there for the fifteenth.
Okay, so you might not be there for the sixteenth?
Wednesday's untypically up in Calgary.
Okay, we shall eat on your behalf, no problem.
Send your wife.
Who's going to cook for you?
Six o'clock.
Yeah, I usually don't get back till about two o'clock in the morning most days.
Okay, so send your wife, please. We'll be glad to have her.
I'll see if I can...
Okay, so is July sixteen an okay date?
What time are we going to do this?
Okay, well, normally around five o'clock, six o'clock.
And it'll be held here, right?
We'll see, maybe the reunion center, because they have the barbecues there, so...
Spouses are invited, right?
We'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
You need a motion on that?
No, I don't think so. We'll send an invitation with the...
Do you need a motion?
Are we cooking today?
I don't think so.
Eric, can I just maybe recommend that we, instead of emphasizing, and I'm sure we were going to do this, but instead of emphasizing that this is because we got a big chat back from Workers' Comp, that rather because accidents were low and safety was, you know...
Well, it's a two-pronged reason, right? Because they may have had a great success, we might not have had no money, and might not have had the funds to put up such a thing.
I think I see what...
But you're right, the reason is for the safety record.
To celebrate that safety record.
And this is celebration, and to go further along with...
So that my employees are going to want a dinner.
To go further along with what you're saying...
Brave loser.
To go along with what you're saying, in our strategic planning, we had said that we would celebrate successes of employees in our town, and that is one way of doing it.
Next.
Good. Seven F, staff, administration want to talk about pool staffing.
I'll have Jeff speak to that, and I apologize, we didn't have an RFD done in time, so we couldn't speak to it.
The pool staffing is obviously not being used right now, exactly what they were intended to be.
That is true. Pool staffing has proven to be a bit of a bigger headache than we had hoped this year. And it partially comes to do with the fact we're opening late, many of these kids need to start working earlier. And we've also run into a couple of things, such as one of the people we hired just got his mission call and leaves in July. So, we won't have him for very long. Needless to say, if I just get to the point, we have another sibling request, where we have a family actually from McGrath, and there's three of them again, who are lifeguards. Dave is looking to hire the oldest two, because they can both teach and lifeguard. The youngest can teach but not lifeguard, and Dave would like to have the option of using them on a part-time basis, if we need teachers for the swimming lessons. So, we are, we're not much further ahead than we were last time I stood here and asked for the same request, because we lost some of the kids over a bit of the time, and some schedules have changed, and many have to leave mid-summer. So in order to fill everything, we're going to have a bit of a, we'll have a few at our disposal, but many will be on part-time hours until one goes away for the summer, or goes on a mission, and they'll be more full-time. But I need, if council approves, to allow for us to hire some siblings again.
Do you have the names?
I don't. Dave just met them and interviewed them a day ago, and we told him we couldn't get back to them, and he texted them to see if he got the message, but he did.
Councillor Bangry, can you give me a minute? Can you just tell us, in hiring that complement of lifeguard and teachers, would you have a full slate of lifeguards for the season, the remainder of the season?
We would have a manageable amount. I don't think it would be necessarily a full slate after a couple of them leave, but then Dave would also work with a couple of the younger ones to get them so that they could lifeguard by August.
Would they have, would they be certified?
They have to put some hours in first.
They need certification.
They've got to teach so many hours, so they can do swimming lessons, and then they can get so many hours that they can go take their tests to be lifeguards.
Okay.
So there, we have kids at qualifications all over the spectrum. And unfortunately, it's those senior ones who, one of the senior ones we're losing the end of July, they can do both, and a couple others who are going to take another employment.
Okay, all right. Councillor Bangry?
I prepare to give administration whatever authority they need to get this pool opened and to hire staffing.
Okay.
I like opening it.
Okay.
With a budget on construction.
No. But we need this pool, and after running a swimming pool down here, it is hard to find qualified staff late in the season.
So essentially, the issue is because of siblings. So maybe you want to put as whereas a town requires council to approve siblings to be lifeguards...
To be hired.
To be hired, therefore let council pass a motion to allow such.
We've had that motion already.
Yeah, but that's...
On specific kids, so can we make amendment, an amendment to that motion?
Just make another motion.
Pardon me?
It's better just to make a further motion to...
I just give you the motion.
The hiring of the siblings from...
Yeah, go for it.
I move that we allow the hiring of the siblings to fulfill the obligations and requirements of staffing.
If I may, just to friendly amendment, if we add whereas, and clarify that that's just for this year, that way there's not people expecting...
Whereas council is required... Whereas we don't have enough people applying for the positions of lifeguards.
It's whereas council is required.
And whereas council is required to approve the hiring of siblings.
They just got their name, it's the Broadhead siblings.
Broadheads?
So should we include that in there?
The name should be in there.
Okay, that, then move that we allow the Broadhead siblings to be hired if so determined by those doing the hiring.
For the two thousand thirteen...
Two thousand fourteen season.
Say, yeah, appropriate qualification.
Is there a quick, can I ask a question?
Okay. Can I answer this first?
I just wanted to clarify, the policy, just because there was some discussion here about for this year only, the policy is that it requires a motion of council when they're hired the first time. If we want to bring those siblings back in two thousand fifteen, it doesn't require an additional motion.
Right.
They could come back.
Just so that that's understood, because if we feel that their performance warrants being rehired, then we have the ability to...
Maybe, if you find the old policies that we have regarding this...
The old motion?
The old motion that we had, we made a motion not that long ago.
I think this motion is fine.
But the motion is okay.
Yeah, this motion is fine.
Do you want to read it over? I see yourself kind of shaking your head over the...
We just had a lot of discussion on this one.
It's a whereas, has you...
So, moved by, and we had one motion on the table, and then we kind of just...
No, it wasn't a motion, he was just talking, there was no motion.
I just withdrew it.
Okay, all right, so moved by councillor Barkis. Whereas administration requires council approval to hire siblings, and whereas there are not sufficient applicants for...
The present position.
A full complement of that.
For pool staffing requirements.
Yes.
Now therefore be resolved, if council gives administration authorization? To hire the Broadhead siblings and any other siblings required to fill the staffing obligations to the pool, is that also part of the motion?
Sure, that sounds perfect.
Well, if it's wide enough...
Don't want us coming back next year.
That's right, that's exactly what I'm thinking.
We'll laugh at the plebiscite.
You're doing fine, next time we'll be better prepared to have the motion ready. Okay, all in favor? Thank you.
Now I have a question.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, councillor Bond.
Okay, because we have a problem with the late start, is there any possibility that some of these kids could be hired on to do other work ahead of time?
They are made now.
So that they will have work, regular work. For the, just so councils were, we've had two of them down there for about three weeks already, or two of the senior kids.
Yeah.
And they've been planning summer games, they've been getting lesson schedules ready, they've been cleaning the building, they've been getting it all cleaned from the construction. So yes, and then Dave is having a staff meeting with all the hired kids tomorrow, tomorrow after school, and they'll start bringing them in now to get everything prepped and cleaned, and doing a little training.
Good.
We can't hang them out much longer, or we're going to lose them.
Yeah, well, they need the money, and we need them, so...
Yeah, good, thank you.
Jeff has a slide coming up.
Okay, for your interest, it's a good question. We could have kept it on the question.
Okay.
Can you keep it on the question?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, thank you. So, eight, financial report, the financial report will come at the next meeting. Okay, so you can make a note of that. Nine, committee and others report, town council motion list is there for your informations. If you have questions, please go ahead, and you may query administration.
Yeah, on the...
Councillor Bond?
Getting the opinion on the Caboon Golf membership, is that to discuss with the Black Sands, have we got any mention back?
I have put a request, I've had a response from one individual, he has said, he hopes that I'll get additional response, but I will have it on the agenda the next meeting.
Good.
Okay. Any other questions? Do you need a minute or so to read them over?
Also, family fund run, the incorporating the color part into the fund run, has anybody reported back on that, whether they're going to...
I haven't heard anything at this time. To do those, like Color Me Rad, or whatever they're called, it's quite a process to get into that, so it may not happen in this year, but potentially in the future. They're pretty large events, so I'm not sure what the criteria is for those.
Okay.
While we're here, and we can ask this question here or in correspondence, but the medical marijuana bylaw change, are we looking at a proposal in the near future on that? What's the update on the...
Councillor, it will be under twelve, and legal advice, we will discuss that in camera.
Great. Oh, did you say in camera?
In camera, because it's a legal advice.
Lovely.
Okay. At this point, when it is a legal advice, that is one reason for in-camera meeting. You have legal, you have land, and you have personnel that are there to...
Yeah, I mistaken that under the category eleven, so...
No, it's all right, no problem, no problem. Okay, now let's go ahead with a question. Councillor Bangry, your question, please.
Yes, pertaining to the slides at the pool, are they going to be in place this year?
Okay, can I give you a little bit of an update that I got on Sunday? On Sunday, I had...
Sunday?
Yeah, Sunday. I was approached by the president of the Rotary, who told us he just had received a phone call telling him that they had been successful to obtain a hundred thousand dollar grant.
Awesome.
Excellent. Madam Chairman, Jeff and I were just talking, it's probably appropriate for us to give you a quick briefing on where we are with the pool at this point, because you're going to start getting a lot of questions.
Start?
Well, if the weather stays like this, no one's going to be too concerned, but as soon as the sun comes up... So I'll just, if it's okay, I'll just have Jeff...
I think it's a perfect timing to get a degree.
You may recall that if we go back, probably a couple of months ago, excuse me, the opening day we were shooting for was Monday.
Yes.
So, five days from now. We're going to be very close, we really are, and Acapulco's been great, they've been working their people, and they're getting everything done. If you go down there now, you'll see that the pool's about half-full of water. Although today was a little bit humorous, the guys were out sanding the coping with their pants rolled up to their knees in the water, because they had a couple places to touch up, so everyone's scrambling a little bit right now to get everything done. The epoxying is done, all the coping is done. We're missing one of the toys, there's one small toy to still come, but you've seen the tumbling buckets in the palm trees. The talk pool still has to be epoxied, because they were just finishing some tiling and a couple of things on that, but that'll take a couple of hours, that's not a big deal. So the two big things in front of us right now, as you can tell, is the concrete deck. As of today, they started forming the deck, so everything's at elevation, all the drainage is in, we had to get all the deck drains in to the right height, and they started forming that today, and all the grounds compacted, ready for cement. So what you'll see over the next two days is all of the styrofoam going in, which will be under the cement slab, and all the rebar on top of that. And then next week, which would have been our opening day, you will see the deck be poured next week. So we're looking at a week from Monday, is what we're hoping is the date.
And the landscaping from the deck out.
Jeff, Jeff, is it? Oh, I'm sorry, councillor Bangry?
The landscaping from the deck out.
Yes, this question was a landscaping from the deck out. So what it's going to look like on the north side of the pool, it will be concrete deck twenty-five feet out from the pool, and then it will be sod from that point to the sidewalk, and we will be fencing in that entire area to be in the pool enclosure. Oh, I forgot to mention, the fencing starts next Monday as well.
Good.
For opening date, that will not be done, we're just going to put some temporary fencing right to the edge of the concrete.
Okay.
And then over the rest of the summer, we can get this underground irrigation, and the sod and everything in that part.
Further to that, Jeff, is it a wise thing to have grass in a pool area, because it'll be tracked into the water?
Good question. And it's been a greatly debated topic, to say the least. We have gone back and forth, and then back and forth, and then a couple more times after that, on turf, or grass, or all cement, and we've looked at different facilities that have done different things. The original design of the deck, and that actually being up until about two weeks ago, was that there would be concrete from the north side of the pool, sixteen feet, there would be twelve feet of turf, and then the rest of the way would be concrete again, so it'd be a little island of turf essentially, that would stretch all the way down. We went, well, we've talked to, and also went to a couple of pools that have turf, and they're not liking it right now that much. It starts to get very dirty, and they can't wash it very well, over our snow sitting on it, and also turf, the more realistic turf has rubber crumb in it to help it stand up, and that tracks everywhere. So, we're aware of a couple of the pools that have sod within proximity of the pool. We're hopeful, and we may be pouring some more cement next year, but we're hopeful that the proximity of twenty-five to thirty feet from the basin is enough time to not only drip off quite well to get to the sod, but then lose any that's on your feet on the way.
Is there any type of a foot bath that we could put in? Is there any type of a foot bath that we could put in so that they could walk through it?
Yeah, maybe. And again, we're going to kind of look at this. The thought was if we put sawed in now, we're really at a negligible cost. And if it looks like we just need to continue with decking, then we can add to that down the road. But we didn't want to cement in the entire 50 feet.
Okay.
Right, that's just such an incredible cost right now.
Jeff, I'm just wondering regarding that. I just remembered a time when we were looking at a different type of surface at the committee in Bloom for different project. What about the stop of rubber recycled tiles that are there where we could even find a way to get the same grant that we obtained years, a year ago or so?
I can't say we put a ton of investigation into that. We looked at pour-on rubberized decking early on. And most of those options, the cost is incredibly expensive.
Yeah.
They're in the $20-ish per square foot, they get really expensive. And the other problem is many times, although the cement isn't either, but they're not permeable. So if they're tiles, they tend to boil with use and hold water. And they get really hot. They get really, really hot.
You're right, okay.
And so that's the other concern is heat. What we're hopeful of in an ideal world, we'll put the sawed in. If we could even, over the time, we can maybe landscape it a little bit, put some little pathways with cement areas, we can put picnic tables on, people can put their towels out, bring blankets. And by and large, have some cover. But from those we talked to with grass, it seems to be quite manageable. And if you keep it up and keep it watered and bag it when you mow it, it seems to be okay.
Now, the second question I have for you is, what about a splashy opening? Cutting the, yeah, right, cutting the ribbon kind of idea?
Yes.
That took a little bit of earth.
No, there's a lot of backstory here. Sorry, my mind is having to go back over all this. We, oh, my mic's not on either, sorry, Channel 32. We were hoping, we were hoping as part of the opening that we would combine a fundraiser of the community drive for your community, the Ford Drive for your car idea, and have kind of a barbecue and then Ford Drive. And Ford has chosen not to do this one now because they just had one in proximity. So that, we just found that out yesterday. So, we need to look at some options for something. I'm not sure what that looks like right now, to be quite honest. What we may do is a soft opening, where we'll start running. And then in July, we'll pick a date and kind of have a big grand opening type of celebration. Cook some hot dogs, free admissions, those kind of things. But initially up until just recently, we were trying to correlate the grand opening date with the fundraiser as well. And now our fundraiser isn't there, we may have to look at some alternatives. And I just don't have them because we found this out yesterday.
Thank you, Councilor Barnes.
Wouldn't it work through the Heritage Week is a good time? We're going to have a lot of people here, that'd be a great celebration to add into the Heritage Week experience.
Yeah, that would be very good.
Councilor Pivoy?
Yeah, I was just going to say, and just speaking from my experience with Chamber of Commerce. First of all, the Chamber's concern collectively is that Heritage Week is currently fully, it brings in about as many people as Carson can hold. The hotels are full, the businesses are full, and adding another activity that otherwise could attract people on a different week, which would be the Chamber's preference, right? Anything we can do to hype up other weeks, please let's start doing. Because, you know, we're kind of overdoing it on Heritage Week. When we could spread that out and it would be better for the businesses spread out. And that's kind of what the Chamber's looking at, is activities outside of that. That being said, the Chamber also volunteered and voted and decided that they would be happy to step up and do a big, grand opening celebration in the short term. They already assigned some renovations to their big Chamber chuck wagon. They're happy to show up and do the barbecue on behalf of fundraising for the slide. You know, just adding a little more contribution to that.
So, Councilor Pivoy, are you having a date of time during the summer in mind? We are back July the 15th as council. Are you thinking during that week?
So the Chamber was pretty confident that they would not have another meeting before the grand opening. So they approved in principle a budget for the cooking of the barbecue and such for the fundraiser. They already pre-approved that all so that it could go forward without another vote from the Chamber. They're just ready for a date from you. If you want it on the day you open, the Chamber will show up and make it happen. Celebration balloons, the whole works.
Okay, so maybe.
It's already pre-approved through the Chamber.
Maybe could we let administration work with the Chamber on this one? Councilor Benwy?
Now Jeff, this is not with the pool and yet it is. What is happening to the skateboard equipment in the park?
Good question.
Acapulco's sending a truck actually right away to pick up all their excess stuff off the lot as we're wrapping up. They've got stuff kind of strewn everywhere. So they're starting to clean up and we'll start to open that up again. And we've got a couple pieces of equipment as we moved around. We need to get out of there and do some repairs to. So we'll do that, the rest will go there. We'll position it back out around that tennis court once we get it cleaned up.
And are we going to maintain our security camera surveillance down there?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. So, quickly on the water slide, with the mayor talking about the Rotary grant, which is fantastic. We're really excited about that. We need about a quarter million dollars to do all the water slides. By the time you do decking, plumbing, pumps, water slide installation. This puts us at about 140,000. That's where it's going to put us on the fundraising, so we still have a little ways to go. We have a couple other things we know are coming in that will help us along the way. So, I don't know exactly when those water slides will go in, but that got us a long way closer, that's for certain. And as far as other budget items, the pool project itself, there's no alarms as far as budget. Everything's been fine, Acapulco's right on the money where they quoted us. We have a couple of things, we're working out back and forth. For example, they couldn't get, they needed some equipment, and so we could get ours quickly. So we ran ours down there and then they credit us back for those hours and vice versa. So we've kind of swapped some work back and forth because it was just time-wise more convenient. So we'll have a few dollars and nothing more than a couple thousand dollars that will work out back and forth at the end. So I'm not concerned about that. And, you know, I'm just watching the rain come down there. Even those little bursts of rain really delay us.
Yeah.
So they're a little unfortunate, but everybody's still feeling pretty good about a week from Monday. I really think it can come together barring some strange, something unforeseen coming up, you know?
Okay, Councilor Benwy?
I'd also ask administration to make sure that letters of thanks goes to all the people, like Rotary Club, the county, for their in-kind work and so forth, so that they recognize.
The Rotary apparently is getting the check on Thursday.
Well, we were thinking of Councilor Barnes along those lines. We don't have it set up yet, but sometime during the course of the summer is having like a donor's night where they can bring family and friends and we order to them and we have a little, we do a barbecue or something and do a big thank you for.
Would be a nice idea.
At the pool, yeah. And tell them they can bring six or eight other people and have a nice evening.
Just a thought, could we put a plaque on the inside of that pool wall as a donor's plaque and put names?
We'll be doing all that, yes.
We'll be doing that?
Yeah, that's already planned for everyone who donated. In the meantime, we've ordered, well, we have some paper that we can, it's banner paper for outside. We'll print it all out now for the time being until we get that wall constructed and get all the lights done.
Jeff, because as Councilor Barfus is saying, there's a lot of phone call and as you refer more and more people, I started to ask, is it possible to put something on the front of the gates or on the door of the swimming pool with a potential opening date?
Yeah, we plan to do, we plan to do a couple of banners. I don't mean to, I'm not trying to make.
Might not be done as much as.
It just scares me because I go down there one day thinking everything's great and then it finds out something's four to six weeks away.
Well, that's right.
But yes, we've started putting on Facebook, if you see, and on the website, that opening is closer than you think, please watch this. On Thursday, we're going to be putting out the swimming lesson schedules and starting registration for all of that. So we'll be doing that this week. And, yeah, we talked about with our banner that we can print, putting something up like, you know, 10 days, 14 days till opening, or something like that. Again, everybody, as soon as you talk about that with all the contractors on site, everybody gets nervous, but it's definitely doable.
I'm even wondering if we just say we are shooting for this day. You know, put a star, comment or whatever, splashy, splashy news. Something of that sort, doesn't have to be a firm date.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, then one more question about this. I've had several questions about the fence, a lot of people are concerned. Are we doing cast iron? I know we were talking temporary initially and then we'll do something more permanent later, or?
No, there's a 10-foot chain link fence coming all around the hole.
But is that like permanent?
That's our. Permanent, that's.
That's our ugly plan. I mean, that's our.
If you run a swimming pool, you'll know that there's midnight bathers.
Oh, sure.
We wanted something particularly from the north side, all secure, agreed, but also that people could see in.
Yes.
We didn't want a solid fence, particularly on the north side. Now, having said that, I can anticipate that on the south and west, we may have to look at something if we need to block the wind a little better.
We are leaving a solid fence on the east.
Yeah, the east side fence is staying up. We're going to change it next fall, this fall. But for right now, for the summer, it will stay as is, as a solid fence. And then it will still always be solid because the laneway's there. But the north and the south are 10-foot chain link.
Okay, any more questions? Thank you.
Fantastic job.
Thank you very much for the update, appreciate that. Okay, let's go to 11, first comments. Alberta Development Officers Association sending invite, but we don't have to go down. Alberta Health Service. It's just to let you know for information what Alberta Service is, Alberta Health is doing right now in the different communities to kind of upgrade the different services in the communities and their interest in improving services for communities. Just. C, Minister of Canadian Heritage, to let you know that we obtained a grant of $3,000 to go to July 1st party in a park, so we can buy ammunition. Or fireworks. And the fireworks are expensive, they're about $3,000 a piece.
Mayor?
Forty-five hundred a piece.
Yeah, just for clarification, party in the park this year is football, is that right?
Minor football has run, of course, the last three, yeah, I think the last three. And I haven't heard any different, I assume they're doing it again.
Okay.
Let me clarify that question. What is the total cost of the fireworks displayed each time?
Five thousand per event.
Per event, okay.
So we do two events a year.
That's not bad.
I'm going to smoke.
Closeness pass was 40 grand.
Okay. No, we're not spending.
Yeah, let's do it.
They do the music too, you know?
Nice.
Okay.
Of the fireworks, I was talking to a fellow from out of town and he said, we have one of the best fireworks displays in southern Alberta. He says, nobody else compares.
Well, kudos to Jeff who runs the sport.
Brand New York.
Running.
I run around with a flare and start them. That's all.
Is that what you do?
Mayor, can I address that issue? Are we got qualified people down there running the pyrotechnics?
Yeah. And we have all fireworks.
I signed it today.
I think that's very, very a must.
Safety is paramount for us.
We wouldn't run them otherwise, council.
And we've got, we've got barricades to keep the kids from.
Yeah, and we work with the fire department to keep the kids off.
Emergency services comes and backs everyone up around the perimeter of the fireworks.
Good, thank you.
All right, we have another piece of information from Senator Scott Tennis. Unfortunately, we received.
We do ESO?
Oh, ESO. ESO is an update regarding the project. We don't have here anything about AltaLink.
Our project that was presented and had the open houses here was a Goose Lake to Juneau.
Yeah.
And it's included, I guess, as part of the Goose Lake to Etzcomkuli. But the last information we got on that officially from AltaLink was that it was on hold.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure where that project's at.
Okay. So, E, 11E. Information that was received unfortunately too late to do something about it is to declare a health day in the community. I really believe that it fits within our planning and we should do something about it for next year for sure.
Right, do we want to maybe recommend to administration to plan to do something next year then?
Yes, I really would like that. And I really think we should include lifestyle, the schools, park and recs, local gym.
And this new tomorrow.
Citizens walk, new tomorrow, healthy food, picnic maybe to be, to be part of that.
We missed Seniors Week, did we not?
Seniors Week, if you remember, was not missed. We had, it has been rescheduled with the seniors because they're having their flooring in the seniors building redone. So they're going to do it postponed it for another week or so. And if you remember, I spoke to the senior about a week and a half ago or so, two weeks ago. And I congratulated them on the senior and all what's done in the community. So they were not forgotten. And I will also do at one point a presentation at the lodge.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. A UMA is much more important to us for our work. A UMA is going to have the compilation of all what was done regarding the upgrade of the MGA. That one is going to take place the 17th and the 18th and 19th, sorry.
Which is coming up very early.
Okay, I will go there. There is a question for you as to, is there somebody else that would be interested to go up there? Councilor Barnes?
How many?
Administration.
How many?
Administration, well, you know something? We have a little bit of money in our council budget. Not to deplete it, because in September, we have the A UMA and that will come out of that budget. But there's a little bit of money. So if there is one or two councilors that want to go, we have the ability to provide.
I could attend if you want to be too, Mayor.
No, don't put it this way, it's up to you if you desire to go.
Well, if you find, if you think it's necessary, because you've been going to mayor's rees conferences, this sort of tags into that, into that.
Yeah, this is why I'm going is because we had Ellen Rice. Rice, who really wanted to make sure that the mayors and we would be there because they're going to present at the very first day the perspective of non-elected officials regarding the MGA review. And then we want to make sure that the way they view the world for modification of the MGA kind of fits with the elected official view. And then see how we're going to work that out and recommendation would come out of there from the elected perspective. Therefore, it's fairly important.
Madam Mayor, I would suggest that perhaps you and another counselor, a report could come back to council on that meeting, if that saves costs in any way.
Yeah.
I believe that you expected that I would attend.
Yes, absolutely. And I have to be in Calgary the day before, so I will not have any cars for traveling associated except for hotel and party and. Councilor Barnes?
I would like to attend.
Okay, all right, so.
I think Councilor Benwy would like to go too.
Well, let's.
Do you want to just have one or?
Maybe let's take one with us and then we'll report.
I think that would, I mean, two of us there, I don't know that having more voices there gets our.
It's the information session, is what I see.
It's the information session, I think having two members of council plus administration there is probably.
Okay, now, maybe let's look at it from this perspective, kind of decide between you two. Can I decide between you two which one would go?
Oh, that Counselor Barnes go.
Okay, Counselor Barnes will be the one that will come. And Counselor Barnes? Yeah.
So do the 18th, so there'll be one overnight stay?
18th and 19th.
Two nights over? Or just the one night?
They're done by noon.
Say we stay overnight on the 18th and then the 19th we would go home in the afternoon, right?
Sorry, on the 17th, I believe you'd want to stay overnight. It starts at 8:30 downtown.
Okay.
Yeah, you need to be downtown and many...
Early mornings.
Okay, so you're going to book the rooms for us?
I'll arrange things for you. I actually am there for some other things as well, so you'll need to travel along.
Okay, that's okay. So 17, 18, and 19, right?
The night of the 17th.
Okay, thank you very much. And we are pretty well done with this portion of the meeting.
I'll make a motion to go in camera.
Thank you. Thank you very much to all of you for being here.